It's seven o'clock, I called a meeting to order. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Here. Jennifer Anderson. Here. Doug Flornow.
Here.
Ralph Messer.
Here.
Jerry Compton.
Here.
Bob Walk.
Here.
And Yomnol. Here.
Do any board members or other persons not already on the agenda have anything to add at this time?
I have two things to add. One is approve the new Trojan Stadium scoreboard in agreement with all Iowa score tables. That would be under four E. That was considered during the last month's board meeting and has been to the finance committee and is ready to come back before the board tonight as old business agreement. Before E approve new Trojan Stadium scoreboard in agreement with all Iowa score tables. One other item is to, there'll be new business five G. Approve a cooperative sharing agreement for boys swimming with the Hummer. And we presently have an agreement, but that is something new that we just got the contract for.
Any other additions? May I have approval of the agenda as printed, Salute? And amended?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried on. A motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent items, seconded.
Then moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. The next part of our meeting deals with public participation. I have a number of requests to address the board. I'll just call them in random order. I would request our board policy does state that we have discretion to limit the amount of time set for public participation. I don't want to limit anyone's speaking, but I think that we can probably say what needs to be said within three to five minutes. So we would ask you to keep your remarks to that timeline. I'm just going to go randomly. Would you please come up to the microphone when your item is called? Mr. Gridley.
Hello, everybody. I've been in Jefferson County my entire life, some of you guys are my principal, colleague, teacher, teacher. My agenda tonight is dealing with both issues. One of closing Lincoln School and the other one is moving my fifth grader to the elementary school. Start out with Lincoln. I disagree with the whole, the idea of closing the school. The reason I disagree with that is because some of those kids from that area and the ones that are bused from wherever maybe they're bused from grow a real tight bond with the, with the teachers and, and the faculty there. We go moving that and I talked with, with Ralph about this and I was moved from school to school to school to school. And yeah, I had, I had a heads up on all, all the other kids because I knew a lot of them. But I didn't ever sow any roots. And right now, that's important, I think it is, it's just like family. And the other thing is moving, moving my fifth grader to, to the middle school. She's, she's, she's quick witted, she's smart. Would I, would I like her to see her to go to that school? No. She, she still needs that last year of, of elementary where she can be the, per se, the role models for the school, the, someone to look up to, the, the ones that are, are the crossing guards, the, the ones that do the, do the in halls, reading buddies, that type of stuff. Some of our fifth graders are really not ready for, for the middle school. Some of them possibly could be, but it's not, it's not, if, if I was in your shoes, it's not a chance I want to take because if, if we're losing students now and we go do this and, and it fails, we're going to lose a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Mindy Hoskins.
I addressed the board the other night at the other meeting, so those of you who were there have already heard my opinion. I also sent an email and if any of you did not receive that, I have copies. If you need one, be happy to give you one. Going to be very brief because I already stated my opinion. I have one extra thing to say to the board members this evening. These two decisions are separate and they should be kept separate and they should be voted on separately. Closing Lincoln School is one issue, moving the fifth grade to the middle school is a separate issue. If you think you must because of budget vote on Lincoln School, do that tonight, but table the decision about moving fifth grade until you've had time to look at other options. There are other things that you could do. And that's all I'm asking is separate the two issues. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mindy. Next, Stephanie Gridley.
She's not here right now.
Will she be here later?
She's planning to attend, yes.
Okay, we'll put her down. Sherry Nisley. If I don't get your name right, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Sherry Nisley and I, I'm so happy to bring to you some of our World Link Foreign Exchange students and to get a chance to introduce them to you. I came last year with Katia. This year, we're very thrilled to have three students at Fairfield High School from three completely different countries and areas. And just briefly for a reminder, these students come on a U.S. scholarship. They went through approximately a nine-month selection process to get here and they're very much top-notch students and they've been enjoying their time here and we're very thankful that, that you as a board welcome exchange students and that they've been so well received at Fairfield. Thank you, Mr. Sataf. So I'll let each of them introduce themselves.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Redona Chalaku. I am from Albania, which is a really small country near Italy and Greece. And I just want to thank everyone for the possibility they gave me to like attend the Fairfield High School. I didn't choose the placement, but I'm more than glad that I was placed in Fairfield. It's the best community I could ever learn about the American life. And I've been really enjoying my life over here. I've been involved in so many things and that I would never have the chance to be involved back in my country. I've, I want to thank Mr. Sataf because the high school has been really great to me. I've felt like part of, like, like part of my home was over there. They've all welcomed me and I've, I've never felt a difference. I've never felt like I was an exchange student over there. So thank you, everyone, for the possibility.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ibar Sharipov and I'm from Kazakhstan, which is in Central Asia. And I'm very glad to stay here in Fairfield and I want to really thank you for letting us to have this great opportunity to study and to learn more about the American culture here in FHS and Fairfield High. Yeah, so thanks for letting me and other exchange students to share with our cultures and thanks for hosting us. And I learned a lot about U.S. culture, mentality and other extracurricular activities in high school. So, man, thanks for the opportunity.
Good evening. I'm Dimitri Kolich. I come from Serbia and I'm very glad that I'm in Fairfield High School because, I don't know, I think it's perfect surrounding because there is a lot of cultural differences inside the town and all the people are more than respectful towards my coun- country and culture. I'd like to thank Mr. Becker and Mr. Sataf for accepting me to Fairfield High School and I'm very glad and I'm in that school because I've, I've been involved in a lot of extracurricular activities and which I don't have a lot of chances to do in my country because my schools are more academic. They push academics a lot more than, and we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of extracurriculars and I love all my classes and I think it's pretty good here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question. A question, question. Could you tell me what the, one thing you're going to miss the most about being here when you go back?
Snow.
Friends and host family.
Who is your host family?
Gaudis. Mrs. Gaudis.
Probably Hawkeye's game on Saturday nights.
Ibar Redona, say who your host families are too. Michael Serm, please, Kelly and Deb's neighbor.
I'm saying it's Mr. Lee and Mrs. Lee's family.
Sure, could you tell us the name of the program under which the students arrived?
Yes. The, the placement organization is World Link and they're actually with three different funding organizations. One is Flex is who Ibar is funded through. The A-Smile program is who Dimitri is funded through and the Yes Southeast Asia is who Redona is with. World Link works only with, one of the differences of our organization versus the bulk of them is we only work with students that come on a, on a U.S. scholarship. That's all we focus on, so. Thank you.
Next speaker, Charles Brandon.
Good evening again, members of the board. I'll keep it brief. Between the last meeting and the meeting before that, I kind of sat down and just generated a bunch of questions and whittled them down to a couple. And one of the things I'm thinking about is, I mean, I can't look at everything and figure out exactly how bad the budget crisis is because me and accounting don't get along so well. But I understand that there is a budget problem and this is why you're looking at closing Lincoln. So, one of the things that's brought up before and I just want to reiterate it is, the question is, if we close Lincoln, are we going to wind up closing Libertyville two to three years down the road? Since I noticed both the numbers for how much we would save has been marked under both schools on the sheet on the Fairfield'sfuture.org website. And I understand a lot of people are saying, okay, we're losing enrollment. Well, there's not a ton of new businesses coming to Fairfield and enrollment will continue to decline. And that'll, you know, kind of alludes to question number one, as far as the closing Libertyville. And I know a couple of people asked this question before and it is not, it's not a popular question by any means, but to take the sting out of what may happen three years down the road, why not consider closing Lincoln and Libertyville now to alleviate pain a few years down the road and go ahead and distribute the students between Washington and Penns? That's about it, so. God bless your decision anyway you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Phillips.
Okay, as she said, I'm Derek Phillips. I teach fifth grade at Washington and I'd really like to keep it that way for next year. I guess first, I'd like to agree with Mindy in that I do think it is a separate decision. It's, you know, closing Lincoln, closing a school as opposed to moving fifth grade, to me is two separate issues and I'd like to see it voted on in two separate issues. It doesn't seem like it's a package deal and it doesn't seem fair to actually vote on that at the same time. So I would like to take, or see you take into consideration actually voting on that at different times. Also, I guess, I was talking to a friend, he works in West Marshall in State Center, Iowa, and they have a five through eight building. And he asked me a simple question, he's like, let me ask you one question, Derek. And he goes, if you had a school carnival at your car- or your school, would everybody be invited? I said, well, yeah, sure, everybody would, would be there. K through five, it'd work. He goes, no, let me ask you this. At my building, if we had a middle school dance, five through eight, again, I remind you, does everybody get invited? I said, well, heck no, you're not going to have fifth graders at an eighth grade dance too. And he's like, exactly. He's like, that's a problem we run into. When you have a group or when you have a social function and not every group that's in your school is part of it, we have a problem. And that's a problem that they have up in West Marshall. And he teaches five through 12 band, so he sees pretty much everything that goes on there. And his wife teaches in the middle school and she says that's a big problem that they have is that when we have a social function, we tend to leave the fifth graders out because they socially are not where eighth graders are and they don't belong there. So that leads me kind of to another question. First of all, I guess we're, we're all here for kids. We want to do what's best for kids, I hope. And if not, well, then we have more issues. But why are we, why are we, I'd like to, you know, kind of take a step back and look at it from the outside, talking to other people. They say, well, why are, why are fifth graders being secluded then? If this is the right move for kids, can you answer why are they being secluded? If it's a good move? To me, it was like saying, I live next to a serial killer, but it's okay because I put up a fence. I'm secluding myself from them. They're still, I'm still exposed to that person. These fifth graders are still going to be exposed to what's going on at the middle school. I mean, I had, you know, a couple of kids come today that were in eighth grade saying, hey, we had an eighth grade girl bring her baby today to the middle school. I don't know if that's true, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, but you're telling me that a fifth grader needs to see that? I'm reading a book now that I didn't feel comfortable talking about a girl in middle school starting her period because my fifth graders are not mature enough to handle that yet. A lot of my boys, they're just not mature enough. I'm sending you, and I'm going to apologize right now, Mr. Daly, I'm sending you some that aren't going to be ready for middle school as sixth graders. They're just not mature enough yet. I handle maturity issues. I treat them sometimes like we're, they're young kids, they're young kids. And in my opinion, secluding them is not going to keep them not exposed to what's going to happen. So I guess I'm just asking, you know, keep that a separate vote, take into more consideration about possibly moving them. And I guess another concern I have is all this was proposed and as a fifth grade teacher, I was never asked anything, I guess. To me, I thought it was important that, I know I don't have as much experience in fifth grade, but there are some other people who have taught fifth grade for many years that were never asked, and I'm not saying you had to take my opinion into consideration, but who knows the fifth graders the best? Fifth grade teachers, ones that have been there. We know their maturity level, we know if they can handle it. We know a lot more about these kids than probably many of you do, unless you were a fifth grade teacher, obviously. But we were never asked that opinion and I guess that kind of concerns me that a lot of these decisions are being made without, without us, without the people that according to you guys would be the ones that would make it work. Us fifth grade teachers are the ones that would make this work because if kids are going to adapt, I'm sure, to anything, but the adults have to make it work. And we were never asked anything. So I know, I think maybe two out of the six might go if it's proposed. That's kind of the word that we, we talk about. Four of us not going. I guess I just wish that we were kind of asked a little bit, a little bit more. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Gridley.
She's still not here.
Robert, do you know anything?
I, I know when she shows up, that's all I can say, so.
Board, do you want to allow her to speak? Yes, it is the last one.
I can make a phone call. Who filled out the form that she wasn't here? Who filled out the form that she wasn't here?
She filled it out at previous meeting and then was unable to make one that was canceled because of snow.
I would suggest that if, if she gets here prior to when we discuss this or decide or vote on this, whatever. I'd let her talk later, you know, this is her. But if not.
I agree, I think we can proceed with the agenda and when she shows up in time, then we can.
She can talk before.
Speak at the time when it's discussed.
Sure.
Can somebody that has a sit fill out one of those pink or yellow papers, please come up and talk to the board? I'm slow, so I don't know if I'd be able to get it in.
I did make the statement before.
Right, but I just, I, I, I'm left handed, my left hand and I can't write with my right hand and I'm left handed and I'm a slow writer. I didn't know if I'd be able to get the paper in to you in time.
I, I don't think we should do that because I did make the announcement that, that anyone who wished to speak should fill out the sheet and the same.
You know, I think that's not right.
Robert, will that, when, when she gets here?
She's, she said, just go ahead and continue.
If, if she gets here before we have that item come up, she will be allowed to speak.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Board members, you have several things in your packet. Before I get to that though, let me cover the art. We do, as always, have some neat art with us. We've got seventh and eighth grade art and then Art Club Hands. The art is over there on the side and we're encouraged deeply to, you know, take some time and look at it later. It is listed in the board report. Greg Hollen is, is the art teacher at the Fairfield Middle School. So I would like to give him credit along with his students that are listed. Jumping on to finance. Board, in your packets, you, you found a letter from Mary Coffin, President of the Jefferson County Agency on Aging regarding the lease at the basin of the Senior Citizen Center that we leased for the alternative school, the Opportunity Center. Following that, on page 96, you have my letter back, you know, telling her again that we're looking at a possible closure of an elementary building and I, and that the board won't be responding right away, you know, to, you know, to the thing for extending the lease. We've still got some time that we can look at that depending on what the board decides they want to do. The next thing in the packet is a budget, is looking at the budget five years out in the future. And I, Mrs. Sheets and I have changed places tonight because she kind of has the computer and will be operating that, I'll bring the screen down.
Actually, I'd like to start with page 99. I'm going to go a little out of order if they got turned around and they're probably. And 99 did not print well for you, so I passed out a new colored one if there's enough. And I know you've seen this before, I keep calling out the same spreadsheets, but there's a couple of changes now. The last time you saw it, I mentioned that we were waiting on the final special ed numbers and we now have those. So in the column marked estimated 0809, that is final now. I guess the state didn't change it to final, so I didn't either. But that brown number is hard to see. It's the special ed negative balance was 169,042. That carries down and that changes our year end in the green column, in the green row, I'm sorry, to a minus 260,588. And that's the number that used to be 429 something negative. This is our final number now for 0809. Then, of course, that gets carried through up to 2009, 2010 where you see the, the balance just moves forward. It also changes up there where it's purple because that's the amount that the School Budget Review Committee gave us permission to add back to our authority. That number was precedentated on the final special ed balance, so that changed. So now I got the 26588 in there. The two yellow numbers are new estimates. The first one is miscellaneous income and I reestimated that. It's a more conservative number. If, well, first I should tell you what miscellaneous income is about. Anything except state aid and property tax and instructional support. If you compare it to previous years, it's quite a bit less and that is because we now have some categorical funding that has been removed from miscellaneous income. It's now in the Aiden Levy formula and that is like TSS money, early class size, class size reduction monies. So it's a smaller number than it used to be. Then I also reestimated our total expenditures for the year. Now, remember, this is just general fund. I reestimated to 17,299,991. A little more actual what it's going to be. It was a lower number. So that brings our year end estimate at this time to 138,000 positive. But that's the best estimate we had at this point. Of course, that's going to change some, but. So doing that, the next thing I wanted to do was update that five-year projection. And you've seen this before also, but the numbers have changed a little bit. I'm going to flip down to what would be on page two of that. And I'm looking at columns F, so I'm going to highlight it here.
Page 90?
Page 90.
Page 90, remember? Yeah, I went back to that. Okay, if you, column F just changed to match my actual for fiscal year 0809. Then I updated column G, which is 0910, to equal what I said my estimates are at this point. And then, oh, another thing I did in fiscal year 11, I'm going to hop back up. Don't mean to make anybody seasick. But in fiscal year 11, the state has set a 2% allowable growth for next year. It's not guaranteed that it's all going to be funded at this point, but they have set 2%, allowable growth. So I plugged that back in. I did keep my estimates for future years pretty conservative, minus one and 12 and zero in the next two years. And as well, I left the other estimates the same. For dropping, for enrollment, I did keep a drop in there of 25 kids for next year and then 25 again and then stable.
Can you give me a rough number on, what is the 1% worth on the bottom line here? Can you, can you pull up that?
If, if that would be a one, is what you're saying? That would be a zero.
How much does that work on the bottom line, I'm just curious?
Compare that to what you had on your printout. Does that change?
Changes over here in 2013, 2014.
Yeah, it would be the year following. Because the budget comes the year behind.
That's about $100. So when you talk to a legislature, you talk real numbers.
Okay, I put that back to minus one just for purposes so it matches the printout. But you can see that as we carry it out for the future years, didn't get a whole lot better. Okay, the next step is to look at our budget for fiscal year 11. As you know, we're going to be approving our budget in April. It has to be approved by April fifteenth. So to be soon, I'll be publishing this on the website and in Fairfield Ledger. But I wanted to talk a little bit about it tonight. And I won't go through every line, but I just wanted to point out a few major things. As you can see, we start out with our enrollment. No, you don't have a copy of this on your packets, I'm sorry. It's, it would be quite lengthy, and... I'm going to just tab through, but the first sections are all about enrollment. And by the way, this is all done on the fall counts, so I don't even have to enter this.
Can somebody fix the audio? We're not hearing anything back here, but...
I'll move this closer, I'm sorry.
It's still there.
Is that better?
No.
I mean, the whole system.
Is that better? Would it be better not to use microphone? Try to talk loud? We wouldn't have that noise.
Like we're going to have to talk loud. Looks like all the mics are picking up some kind of air interference. I'm, I'm sorry, the wire was...
I'll try to speak up, but at least you won't have that noise back there. Okay, I'm just tapping through, because the, this is the enrollment pieces.
This is...
So it's just laying close? Is that going to work?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the first number that you might recognize from last month is line five point one six. And that is the allowable growth for dropout prevention that you approved at the last, I believe that was just the last board meeting. And then another number I wanted to point out is line six point one. That's the taxable valuation for all the property, whatever county it falls in. So that's Jefferson, Wapalo, you know, all our district property. Different, now I got to switch hands with my mouse and my microphone. Preschool budget, we don't have preschool, so I'm going to skip over that. We don't have, there, there's instructional support. I just wanted to point out.
That may be helpful.
Thank you. This is the instructional support, and I just wanted to point out that we have that set at the maximum. It's point one, or one percent, ten percent. The next number to talk about is, oh, there's instructional support, support income surtax, and we did not change that either. That's four percent. Educational improvement program, we don't have in Fairfield. Okay, now we're getting down to some important numbers. Cash reserve levy, SBRC, on line fifteen point nine. And I want to point out, if you look up here, is the formula. Can you see where I'm pointing? That is a hundred and thirty-three thousand six eighty-four plus two hundred and sixty-five eighty-nine. Those are numbers that SBRC, the School Budget Review Committee, has given us permission to put on here. The hundred and thirty-three six eighty-four is allowable growth that we approved in November, I believe, for ESL students, open enrollment out, new ones. There would be additional enrollment there, too, if we had it, but we didn't have. The two hundred and sixty-five eighty-nine is, it's actually a dollar off just because of rounding. That's our special ed deficit, or no, I'm sorry. That's our final fiscal year Oh Nine negative balance. The next line is cash reserve levy other. This line, we can put things in that we need to address in our budget. And once again, I want you to look up here at my formula. I've got three numbers in there right now. The nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars is the amount of state aid that we have lost due to budget cuts. It's the ten percent cut that we most recently had, and the one point five percent budget from last summer. So that amount of money we have lost, and I'm really recommending that we ask back the authority for that, because we spent that money. The sixty-three thousand five fifty-two is the amount of state aid we've lost for juvenile home students. Every year, the state divvies up how many state court placed kids there are, and they kind of round those off to this. There are kids that the parents have signed off. There's no home districts, so everybody gets a share of it. And that's how much has been assigned to us. The last number is five hundred thousand, and that, I'm recommending that we put in there just to raise some cash, because we are cash strapped right now, as well as authority strapped. We just have neither. Last year, we also put five hundred thousand in there, just to try to raise some cash, so we have enough to meet payroll. Because, you know, we get most of our tax money in October and April, when people pay their property tax. So those off months, we don't have a whole lot of money coming in unless there's state aid, which is not really enough to meet a payroll. So I need to bankroll payroll all through the year, and right now, there's just no money. So we're borrowing to meet that. By building up that cash reserve, hopefully, one of these years, we'll have enough. Okay, I'm going to go on to summary of general fund budget authority. Now, you'll see the numbers that I put in the previous spreadsheets, my estimates. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand is where I estimate this year to end. And there's my estimated miscellaneous income again. Hopefully, they match. Next is the voted pebble on line nineteen point two. That is the sixty-seven cent levy that the voters approved. That is going to expire in the year two thousand fifteen. We don't have a voted pebble, an income surtax on the voted pebble, so that's a zero. And next, we come down to the final parts of the aid and levy, the management fund. But first, I want you to look down on line twenty-one point three. That's a regular pebble, and that is what the board could approve, the thirty-three cents, without voter approval. And it's our understanding that when the sales tax money was approved by the voters, the board chose, the board committed to not passing that. So we're, once again, we're leaving that blank. We're not going to raise that thirty-three cents. But now, let's back up to line twenty-one point one, management levy. And also, look at the formula. I've got two numbers in there. Two hundred and thirty thousand is what I would anticipate spending for property and liability insurance. That is like a four percent estimated income increase over this present year. The one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars is the amount of early retirement requests that we have in right now. And those won't be approved until April, but we're going to include all that money, assuming that everybody's going to go through with it. You know, employees do have a chance to pull that yet. But we can't wait on that final decision, because it has to be approved. Okay, if the board would choose to levy that full amount this year, as has been historically done, the board has five years to pay it out, but they have levied it all in one year. So if that were the case again, we would be proposing a tax rate of sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, and I'm going to shorten that just for ease of carrying it out, five digits, sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And I'm sure you wonder what we have right now for a levy. So I prepared this little spreadsheet. Proposal number one is to levy the full early retirement amount and the property and liability. That would make a proposed management levy of two dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand, a proposed total levy of sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. There, you can compare it to our current levy, fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And once again, I'm rounding them off just to two digits. It's a lot easier to read and to talk about. The increase per thousand would be two dollars and thirty-two cents, or a sixteen point oh one percent increase over the current year. Proposal number two would be to levy half the amount of the early retirement. Just keep in mind, we're not going to pay it all in the first year. So there I put twenty-three, or two hundred and thirty thousand plus the one point three million divided by two. Make a proposed management levy of a dollar fifty-eight, a total levy of fifteen sixty-one compared to our current levy, or an increase of a dollar fifteen, seven point nine three percent increase. Proposal number three is the two hundred and thirty thousand plus one point three divided by three. That would be carrying it out, so for the next two years, we'd have approximately the same management levy. Be three years in a row. But that would give us a levy of a dollar nineteen in management. Total levy fifteen twenty-two compared to the current, be a seventy-six cent increase, five point two three percent. Some other numbers that you might be interested in. First, the current year average across the whole state, all school districts, is fourteen dollars and eighty cents, is an average levy, compared to our fourteen forty-seven. The highest was the twenty-four forty-two per thousand, and the lowest is eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Then I wanted to look at management fund, and this is proposed next year. This is current year, because I don't really know what everybody else is proposing. You know, I didn't look that up, you know, I'd have to ask everybody. So the current year average management levy is ninety-two cents. The high is two dollars and thirty-four cents, and the low is thirteen cents per thousand. And I had to get that after, there's eight schools that don't even levy a management levy. So I took those eight out, and then I got thirteen cents for the low. So you would compare that to what we're proposing here. So you can see right off, if we try to levy that whole amount, we'd be number one for management levy in the state. That just kind of gives you some things to think about. And I want to hop back to this. This is the sheet that will be published in the newspaper. You have, I'm going to start on this side, actual two thousand nine, reestimated two thousand ten, and then a budget for two thousand eleven. This would get published. It shows, I'm sorry, it shows our total resources, and then our expenditures. And then it also talks about our public hearing will be on April twelfth, prior to the beginning of the regular April meeting at seven o'clock. This will give a chance for voters to come in and lodge their opinions, in favor of or against.
And a copy of this is in the board packet at page one hundred. Vicki, tell us you have this in your packet, too, as well as the association in the folder packet.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Kim, do you have preference for those three scenarios that you proposed? Would you recommend not only...
I would, I would just see, I'm going to pull it back up. I like the seventy-six cents increase, of course, and that would make us kind of in line right there. But we got to remember, we're trying to take a vote, a bond issue to the, to the voters, and we're going to be increasing our debt levy if that would pass. So you kind of got away what we anticipate.
Okay, so, so the one five twenty-nine seven sixty-five there, that's not what we have in the levy right, in, in, on hand right now?
No, no, that's what I'm asking to raise by property tax for next year.
So...
Yes, we have some funds on hand, because we have levied the full amount in previous years, and I haven't paid all that off yet. So that's being invested.
Yeah, so, so if we go with, if, if proposal three there is the least of... That's with over a three-year period?
Right.
What if we stretch it out to a four- or five-year period?
Well, you could. It would be similar, yeah.
Here's one of the things to think about, though. This is where things become a balancing thing, and the board will have to consider. If the, if the board does issue bonds down the road, we will be looked at by, say, Moody's or one of the bond rating companies. One of the things they look at to determine what interest rate and what kind of type of bond rating you should get, and that will affect the interest rate that the district would get, is how willing is the board to get rid of the debt that they have? How willing is the board to, you know, levy what they need to make the district run correctly? So that's going to be just one of the things that you need to keep in mind as you make that decision. And I don't know, it's, it's real hard, Mr. Minister Lee, to try and tell you how that all balances out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, you know... The fact that we would maybe go to a fourth or fifth year doesn't mean necessarily that we aren't going to take care of that obligation, just because we're trying to keep taxes from jumping in bigger lumps.
Completely agree with you. You just, I'm just trying to tell you that other side of that coin, so that you're just aware of that. It's a board decision you don't have to make.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it is perfectly legal to just levy what you think you're going to spend this year. That's not a problem.
And then, we don't know yet what that is doing.
We don't know until April, how many people are going to pull that early retirement request. This is the maximum. I'm sorry.
Do we have to levy before we know?
Yes, we have to publish this ten to twenty days before we approve it. We have to approve it and have it certified by April fifteenth. So that would leave us two days, and that's...
If it turned out we didn't need it all, we'd have to levy it. We have the authority to levy it.
We can go down. Yeah, we have to, we can't go any higher than what we propose, publish in the paper.
The finance committee was, was considering this, and we thought we should publish the higher rate, so we're covered. And we can always levy less than that if we, if we find out that we desire to do that. But if you don't publish at a higher rate, then you cannot ever levy that money in the current year.
Right, in the current year.
So we, the finance committee, though, is prudent to be conservative there.
And again, this is not a decision you need to make tonight, but we wanted to get you thinking about it, because it is a decision that we do need to make next week, and it's going to be published. People will be talking about, approaching you with questions.
Next month.
Next month.
Next month, what did I say?
Next week.
Oh, okay, I saw Jennifer saying something, I couldn't understand.
But now, like Ralph, what he was asking a while ago about that money...
But now, like Ralph, what he was asking a while ago about that money, there's money in the management fund, but what money is there right now is basically already spoke for.
It's spoken for, right. And you know, interest rates are not great, so we're not making hardly anything on that, but it's in the bank.
Part of the thing, too, if you remember back to the Gatsby, we had to, school districts now have to go ahead and look at their risk management, and, you know, that's all figured by the accrual folks of, what do we call that?
Accrual accounting.
Accrual accounting, well, anyway, they are looking to see what are the exact indebtedness or what commitments has the district made, and what are they, and are they covered? That's part of this whole thing of not getting in the financial mess that we see bolstered so.
Okay.
Thank you. Jumping back to some other things I have in the, under Finance.
Hang on just a second. Now, does this need to go to Gail? Is this the only one that's working?
I think her mic is working too.
Test it.
Because she's on the master.
Test it, is it working?
I'm not hearing it. I think I got a loud enough voice, I'll just try to raise up to my marching band voice from when I was a marching band director. Under, the other thing I wanted to kind of bring out was that the Iowa Association of School Boards, the board probably saw in the DuMarne Register, the write-up that was on page one, the IASB released this, this was yesterday, on their website, the Iowa Association of School Boards, along with the governing boards of ICECAP and ISJIT, that may be the thing.
ICEJIT. ICEJIT?
ICEJIT, I'm not sure what that is, the acronym stands for.
That's a funding, we can invest money there.
Okay. Once to reassure all members of the independence of those programs of security and stability, both programs have their own governing boards, so they are entirely separate entities from IASB. If you have questions, we can call Beth Grove or Paul Kraus at, at the two boards. At the same time, I know we have looked at, one thing we do get from the IASB participate in is the property casualty liability insurance, the EMC, is kind of through, affiliated with the IASB. Just so everyone is aware, we already have been in the process of getting a bid on that from Indiana Insurance, to make sure we kind of keep, you know, that we got some competition there to make sure that we're getting the low price. Fred, was there anything else that we had there with the IASB and their programs?
Yes, we have participated in the IJUN program, the Iowa Joint Utilities Management Program, currently it's with Seminole, and before this information came out from, in the paper yesterday in the DuMarne Register, we have an appointment with our Seminole representative for Thursday morning to study the, and look at our account with them. The theory behind it is to purchase our gas, they purchase the gas in bulk at cost, and we benefit from that, and so we'll be reviewing that account with them too.
And a lot of school districts do that, I've taken part in the past with that with the school district too, as superintendent, you know, to pay for the transportation of the gas and rent the, rent the transport through the pipes.
We only have three accounts, or three meters on it, Fairfield High School and Middle School and Pants Elementary, the rest are with Alliant Energy.
So I guess I just kind of want to assure the board that we are overlooking everything that they're with the IASB, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is it what, what it is that we pay, do we have dues that we pay or something?
We do have dues, I don't know if I know right off the top how much they are.
It's approximately $5,000 to $6,000 a year, we pay it every fall.
Yeah, okay, and, and that's just dues that belong to our organization?
It helps to pay their salaries, you know, and we use them as resources, we call up there, we don't have to pay to ask a question. We also use that ICEJIT, that funding as a, as a banking, yeah, we use that.
Coming around to just one other piece of information, and I do think it does kind of get back into that same finance area, and this is having to do with the April 6 referendum, there's, I think, 50 copies coming, so that's going to come down both sides of the board table here, and then on out into the audience, that also should be able to be found on our website, www.fairfieldsfuture.org, in the very near future. I think it gives good information regarding what will be on the ballot question on April 6th, also where residents can go to the website, plug in the amount of their assessed valuation, whether it's residential, commercial, or agriculture per acre, and then see what that impact that would have on their taxes. I think that's going to, you know, maybe be the beginning of answering a lot of good questions, so I would encourage people kind of take time and look that through. Coming across to legislative, like to read this this morning, this is something I'm concerned about, and by the way, this is coming from our Iowa Association of School Boards, one of the things they do is help us track legislation, and this is one I'm worried about, I have gotten hold of Becky, Senator Smiths, and also Representative Hanson regarding this one. Let me just kind of read this part, I'll try to speak up loudly so the public can hear it too. The Shell Education Appropriation Subcommittee Bill was released this week. A shell bill is one without a bill number, and with an appropriation bill, generally it only has dollar amounts included for the various line items. Rarely does it, does policy language make it into a shell bill until this week. The Shell Bill includes language that exempts the teacher salary supplement, TSS funds, from future across-the-board cuts, and makes it retroactive to the current fiscal year. This language overrules the December 2009 Iowa Department of Education Declaratory Ruling that stated TSS funds are not exempt from across-the-board cuts. IASB adamantly opposes this language, especially the retroactivity of the language, as it unduly burdens school districts when hit with an across-the-board cut. If the majority of a school district or IEA budget is to be held harmless, that makes the cuts even deeper for the rest of the budget. So what they're trying to say is if we have to pay back, and it was approximately $500 here in the Fairfield School District, we would have to pay that back, plus that would be one area that would not ever be cut, even if there was a cross-board cut, then the cuts in the other area of the budget would have to be deeper. Everyone kind of follow why that hap, you know, works that way? The bill also mandates the use of a combined salary schedule, which would place all salaries in one item. The Iowa Association of School Boards also opposes this language, main reason is that we cannot control the budget process at the state level, nor can boards control the governor's ability to use an across-the-board cut due to a budget shortfall. Support staff and educational programs should not take the brunt of a budget cut. Again, they're talking about shifting then to support staff and the educational programs itself. If teachers can guarantee that we will never have an across-the-board cut or shortfall in funding due to regular budget process, we might be more comfortable with the language. Again, I have sent an email on to both of our representative and senator, we'll try to monitor that pretty closely. We're coming up on the, last Friday was the second funnel, where again, things got narrowed down, there's some good things out there still, there's still some things kind of going on, we'll try to be monitoring those as, as we go. I would like to pass these around, I'll start both directions, I can't remember if I ran off enough copies of these for the audience, this is kind of what is alive and what is dead. You had one in your board packet, board from about a week ago, I think February 26th, this one is from March 4th, I believe, yes, March 4th. So it kind of gives you a little bit more update, and you can kind of look at that as your, at your own convenience. The only other thing that kind of came out recently was an item about the nutrition programs and some changes in that, and it kind of sounded like the U.S. Department of Agriculture has determined that some of the procedural procurement practices used by, in Iowa, by some food authorities are not meeting the federal requirement. But Mr. McGowan, you want to address that one if I was to appear?
Again, there was another article in the DuMarne Register last Thursday regarding this, involving a vendor, Martin Brothers, who has the contract with the area education agencies, and a lot of schools, rather than going out and bidding their product, they use the bids that Martin Brothers has for the AEAs. Evidently, there is some concern about on that product, dealing with that process, the directive or the information that I've received from the State Department and from the Department of Ed is that they have worked out a plan, and they have the corrections for, school districts that use Martin Brothers, as well as Martin Brothers will have to have things corrected by July 1. For your information, we do not participate with Martin Brothers, we do our own bidding monthly, we just had our school meal initiative review, and one of the items was procurement. As I said, we do it monthly, our Department of Ed consultant said that we should probably back away from that a little bit, that's a lot of extra work, and do it maybe bi-monthly or even per semester, and so that's suggestions that we're taking and under consideration and will be utilizing, but there has been concerns with, with Martin Brothers and the way that they did their bidding, so.
Thank you, that's pretty much it on the legislative. Basically, the budget should get finished up by the legislature this month, so it's going to be very important that we watch that till the end, and then it will go to the governor for signing. The last topic I have in the superintendent's report at elementary summer school, normally at this meeting, we're talking about that a little bit, we're going to put that off. One of the things we've, for another month, one of the things we normally have looked at doing was our remediation program at the elementary, but then also an enrichment program, I believe we've done last two years, is that correct? And one thing we're kind of looking at with the economics way it is right now is, is the enrichment portion, how are we coming out on that as far as number of students that the enrichment is paying for itself? And so we're going to be analyzing that, and then coming back next month, maybe a little bit more with that. And I'll be working real close with Mr. Weir on that. On that, that's the end of the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Fred, you're up next with Director of the Facility Services.
Okay, I have three items listed there, I'm going to add a fourth item, and that is the security cameras at the high school, we'll talk about that a little bit later. But the first item, the track repair and replacement, if you remember at our last board meeting, the decision was made to take that back to the Finance Committee, present it to the Finance Committee, have a proposal, and then bring it back to the board tonight. If you look at the next page, we have that in place, we do have some concerns with our track, there are dips or raw areas on the track, we have some washouts underneath the top surface, as well as some, some of the top layer is missing, so we definitely need to be doing something. This project was listed for the upcoming year on our construction plan. After thinking about it, I became a little bit concerned with timelines, we don't have much time to go through the process of working with an architect, getting the plans, specifications done, going through the bidding process, and starting work yet this summer. So we changed the timeline around a little bit, I've also been working with John Fitch from Shive Hattery to give us some budget numbers, because we really didn't know what it was going to cost. If you look at that, there are some known estimates now, we're looking at about $132,000 to do a top surface replacement. Again, this is using the silo or save, the current save money rather than the general fund. Unknown cost estimates could be repairing or replacing the subsurface that is under the track. We don't know those conditions of that subsurface yet. The other expense that's listed there is coring, and that's something that we plan to do this summer to find out what that subsurface looks like, or how it is holding up that asphalt base on the track surface. So if you look at the timeline, the recommendation would be to do a patch and repair this spring, and we do have some vendors that we can contact and work with to do that, those types of repairs. That would be for this track season as well as next track season. Then, starting this June, we'll do the coring this summer to find out about the surface or the, excuse me, the subsurface. Then July through October, we'll work with, and my recommendation, and it would be a board decision, is to continue to work with Shive Hattery, this John Fitch is their expert in athletic fields and track surfaces. We would work with him to, this individual, to develop plans, specifications, and the bidding documents for repair or replacement. Then in January of 11, we would bid the project, award the project in February, March of 11, and then start the project in May of 2011, which would be after the track season that year. So that's kind of our timeline that we're looking at, that's what we presented to the Finance Committee and, bringing that to the full board tonight. And there will be an action item later on to, to accept that timeline too.
Did you say in the patch and repair the track to get through the 10, 11 seasons of that, do we have any idea roughly what that will cost?
I do not, no. I don't have an idea. The next item is the middle school rain garden, I've kind of kept you abreast in the last couple of meetings that we have had, we're ready to move forward with this project, the city has made a, is ready to make a very viable commitment in doing the installation, the, the actual work of the, the rain garden. Also, working with Pathfinders and Dietrich Detman, that it appears that there will be grant monies to take care of all the plants that will go into the rain garden, so there will not be any capital outlay for, from the district. Our groundskeeper is working with Mr. Clem at the middle school, they're working on plants and types of plants that will go into this. We've been working with a gentleman named Wayne Peterson, he is the person that has the technical knowledge of the rain garden in the development of that, and that's where we are right now, is in the developmental stages of that. Pending approval of a grant application, or not, excuse me, pending approval of a resolution of support and approval by the Board of Directors tonight, Mrs. Detman will continue to pursue a grant through the Jefferson County Soil and Water Conservation District that will utilize REAP funds for this urban project. They do have, at some point and sometimes, funds that can be utilized in this way. So, again, there will be an action item later on for the support and approval of this, a resolution of a support and approval for this grant process. Any questions about that? Okay? Yeah?
The, we're saying that the, I mean, we hope to get the grants, so there'll be no cost. There's nothing 100% guaranteed.
No, there isn't, but, and, but we've had a conversation with the city, and they want to move forward with this project to, to allow people to see what a rain garden looks like and that type of thing, and I think there's a verbal commitment there to take care of the plannings if necessary.
I guess I look at that there's, there's grant money available there, and it's not, but, and everybody says, well, that grant money's free money, well, I, as a taxpayer, I know where that grant money comes from, and it's not free. So, I mean, we need to, here we are, again, it's another situation that, yeah, we're telling people that it's a, no cost to the district, but it is a cost to them, it's their tax dollars that's, that's doing this again, so.
Well, they're paying the taxes anyway, this way they might get some benefit from it.
Well...
I mean, it's not going to change the taxes whether we get or don't get the grant.
Maybe not immediately.
Well, I think the hope here is that, you know, by having the rain garden and the filtering, that the river and the water won't have to be filtered as much, and so that's the hope.
Well, it's also the city wants to try and stop the, the rainwater from getting into the storm sewer systems, and this is one way to do it, so.
So this is kind of, the city's kind of looking at this as a, maybe a demonstration project?
Somewhat, mm-hmm, yes.
So this takes money off, break water off roofs into this?
This is going to be off the parking lot, the west parking lot at the middle school, it'll take that runoff.
Other things we're doing, keep water going in, going into the sewer system, prevent these other flows that we've been experiencing the last few years.
Yes.
I think we can put to our share, well, there's one.
The next item that I have, there will be an action item to recommend hiring of Barbara Thornton to fill the food service position at Washington. She does have prior experience in a school district in Missouri. I didn't put in this, but it is in the action item, the rate of pay would be 9.58 per hour for this 4.5 hour per day position, and that is in accordance to our support staff schedule. The last item that, that I didn't add or wasn't identified is the security cameras. We've been doing a study and looking at our security camera systems at the high school for the past several months, probably close to five or six months, we've been looking at it and just kind of looking at different options, and there has been, or there is a concern with the quality of cameras that we have on the outside of the building at the middle school. the outside of the building at the middle school. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to Mr. Becker regarding that.
What we're looking at right now, we talked at the finance committee, with the quality of our cameras, we really need an update to what we currently have. We're looking at possibly putting up nine to 11 new security cameras just on the outside perimeter. This proposal is not for the inside. This is just a perimeter only. With our current cameras, that for our sake, as far as for our, the principal's job within the building is to make sure that we're safe and secure 24 hours a day throughout that, throughout that campus. And what we currently have, we have quite a few blind spots on the outside perimeter, but also the capability of our current technology, we cannot zoom in, zoom in on incidents that have happened at night, a lot of things that have gone on when we're not there, we are not able to investigate properly. So we've had a lot of, we've had quite a few incidents of whether there's been some car damage on the outside, we've had some window damage on the building, that we just haven't been able to do a good quality investigation on with the camera system that we currently have. The new proposal, the technology is updated. It has the capabilities to zoom in all the way to get a license plate. We've seen it in action, myself, Mr. McElway, Mr. Currie, the technology director, and Mr. Appel have all seen it in action through, through our vendor that we're proposing. With, with this proposal, it's also going to have the capability to do an expansion later on with the system. It has, has an opportunity to grow. I think what we're looking at right now is nine to 11 cameras, but it's going to have the capability to grow to approximately 30, 30-some cameras, I believe. So, and we'll also, according to our technology director, if we were to look at new cameras, our old cameras could be repurposed possibly at the middle school later on or wherever the district decides where they'd be best used. I think the, also the other thing with this, this company, they're going to make sure that we do not have a service fee, which we did have. Reggie, would you probably have a better?
I don't have the numbers with, right now, but it, it's above $1,000 a year with the current company.
And this would not have an annual fee to it.
The new company, too, would pick up the door lock system, too, that we presently have with them and do that, too, and upkeep that and no...
There would not be a service fee for that.
It lowers our yearly fees down. I believe we were paying around a thousand for one area and 1,500 for the other strikes and breaks.
Right, because there's a...
For the other, so it would lower our fees about $2,500 a year.
The part that I, that I struggle with, I'm the one that a lot of the times that there's an incident, that I go back through the system and replay any tapes. A lot of times I'll, I'll get parent phone calls or have kids come in and, hey, can you look at this? And I don't have, I don't have what they need to figure out what has happened because of the capabilities of our current cameras. So that, that's a frustrating piece on my part and I know that we would like to fix that. We would like to make sure that we have, we have a safe and secure building, you know, the campus at all times.
So, so this proposal is going to be for the outside cameras?
Yes, perimeter only.
Okay. So you said something about adding on, the additional ones, am I assuming that that'll be inside or what?
Well, you know, it could be, it could be an option to go inside, but if some, sometime down the road, if, if an expansion to the building would happen, something like that, that could be a possibility. So I just know that, you know, according to Mr. Currie, the technology's there to expand with this current server.
Yeah, I guess, I like the idea with, with being able, with expandable capability, is that company or whoever we're doing this business with willing to guarantee that we have that expandability? I mean, I was under the assumption that the one we have now was expandable and evidently it's not.
No, it's not. We're maxed out with our current.
I mean, I thought when we bought it that we were going to be able to add to it and now we're told that we can't. So I'd like to, I mean, in, in looking at this, I, I mean, I'd hate to think again that now, two years down the road, they say, well, golly, well, you're maxed out and you need to update things again. I, I mean, if they want to, if they're willing to guarantee the expandability of it.
They do. This one has the ability that we can pick up, the cameras are not proprietary, so we would not have to buy a certain type of camera. The other thing is this company, FSS Security, also does airports. They do multiple schools. They're also involved in three states. They're one of the companies that their equipment watches the outside power lines in places where people have gone and taken down the copper in the power lines. So they're a very dependable and trustworthy company. They're doing two, three, four airports at this time.
Any other questions? Next on the agenda would be elementary school principals. Sue, you're on the hot seat. Do you have anything to add to your report here?
No, it was just kind of a busy month and we had a lot of things going on and sometimes Joe or Nathan will report something that I don't or vice versa. So I think if you just read through, you'll probably get a good sense of everything that went on at the elementary buildings.
Anything to add?
I'm comfortable with her somewhere.
And Nathan is outside of the room right now, so. Next, I'm looking at the high school principal, Mr. Sata.
We have an outline and report on page 111 and some of it is just informational for use, 18 minutes, parent teacher conference throughout, updated, some things that are happening with prom, and then the similar numbers you like to send them up to the basis to just on the attendance report, observation evaluation report, and then just a few celebrations. So it's pretty self-explanatory, I think, unless you, if you look into those areas, I won't be able to elaborate how well, otherwise it's just there for you to look over.
Any questions for Mr. Sata?
Just a curious thing, I'll go on page 116, high school changes, are you, are you making up or going to bring to us or something a schedule of how the day looks with the new program in the past?
Yes, we will. And we're, right now, and I mentioned there, I put out another possible bill schedule that it doesn't change the parameters the board is kind of expecting in terms of length of class periods, length of school period, but plays around a little bit with, with start time. You know, so there are, there are some things that are up in the air a little bit, but it's not going to change from what the board already approved.
It's interesting to look at, for all schools actually, to look at the attendance. That's just kind of significant in terms of success of kids.
Great to see it that high in the attendance in all buildings as well. Mr. Daley, anything to add?
Just a couple of things that were admitted and that was my fault. Eighth grade students of the month were Jackie Eagle and Kent Fanner. Our parent teacher conference numbers, which I left out on air, we were somewhere around where between 50, 55 percent, you know, the grade of parents that came to the spring, parent teacher conferences. And last thing, we did have another celebration. We had our sixth grade gold student participate in the event Iowa competition for open in February. They've been pouring the problem, the design, and created an invention to solve that problem. Lindsay Rep and Katie Bell with their invention called Go Cool and Go are going to state competition Iowa City.
Bright sponsor.
I'm ready for my own, ready to be your first customer. I had a chance to judge for Tina Nelson and the kids, so I actually got to judge for Lindsay. It was pretty neat. They did a nice job.
It's good to hear the bright spots like that. There are several committee reports through 119 through 121. Does anyone have any comments they wish to make on committee reports? This is old business. Next on the agenda is item B on old business. There is a recommendation to close Lincoln as an elementary attendance center and approve placement of fifth grades at Fairfield Middle School beginning with the 2010, 2011 school year. Do I have a motion on that?
No, she wants a motion.
Okay, motion has been made to close Lincoln and approve placement of fifth grade at the middle school. Is there a second?
A seconded.
And set, motion has been seconded. I'll open this for discussion.
Well, it's been a very difficult decision-making process. I still have mixed feelings about it myself. Financially, yes, we, we've got to do something. I'm still, still undecided really whether I feel that the fifth grade needs to be at the middle school. I see both sides of that. Maybe we didn't get started on it quick enough to try and figure some other alternatives. We do have to make a decision, timelines. I guess we'll have to vote our own conscience tonight, what we feel is the best for the district financially and for the kids. So I guess that's all I've got to say, is it's just, it's a tough decision to make and these board members will have to make that themselves.
I have two areas of concern still. We've looked at a lot of information, we've read a lot of information, and I, I do feel pretty confident, fully confident, that if we were to go forward with this, we have all the staff in place that could make it work. Like one of the teachers, I think it was Mrs. Green, said, if we make it exciting, the kids will be excited. I do have two concerns. One, one of the letters that I got today, the question was, and it was repeated by Mr. Phillips, where do the fifth graders belong? We don't want to include them in middle school dances, we're all pretty sure about that. So where are they going to belong? They won't be an elementary school kids exactly, but they won't be middle school kids exactly either. And I think that's going to be one of the biggest challenges to what kind of identity to give them. And I'm sure there's a lot of research and people smarter than me have, are going to, are going to be putting a lot of attention on making that a successful issue. And the other thing I'm a little concerned about is Mr. Phillips, I think, was remarked that nobody's really talked to the fifth grade teachers. Now, it's true that the board had an open meeting and anybody who wanted to come could come and some of the fifth grade teachers did come, but I, I am a little concerned about that, I guess. I'm sorry that it came out at this time, but if that's needed.
Just in response to that, just, just in some dialogue here, I, I respect what he said there and so on, but, you know, if, if, if they're going to be at the middle school, they are going to be at the middle school and so they're going to belong there. Now, how we make that happen, I don't know. That's what Mike and Kelly and the, the fifth grade teachers are going to decide. And I have faith that they can do that. Whether, whether they belong there and, boy, I've just talked to a lot of people about this and written e, had written emails and written things and back and forth and so on. They had some good, good things and I know you've read some things, too. But if you, if you take the fifth grade, which is the eighth graders, and take the fifth grade versus the kindergarten and first graders in the same building, you know, there's a big chance, there's a big spread there, too. And somehow it works there. Now, there's, there's differences there, I understand that, but it's, it's not an easy decision, not easy to...
I feel that we definitely have to do something. And we've hashed over at the work session, we tried to find a way to keep the fifth grade where they were. There weren't enough places, there weren't enough classrooms. If we combine those third, fourth, and fifth, then we start having class sizes that are too big for third grade. Maybe not fourth grade and fifth grade, but third grade, we're still short classroom. I think it would do a lot more damage to have those huge classes than it would to have the fifth graders adjust a middle school situation. I'm kind of like wondering if, if we should make it two decisions so that down the road we want to change our minds? No. But yet, it's, I think it's the right thing to do right now. I'm just really torn about that particular situation.
The issue about two decisions, we still have to make the decision by April at the latest, by the April 4th. It would be, certainly be probably beneficial if we could make both decisions tonight, I would think. And there's just a lot of things at stake, but I, I share your, I will feel the same.
I do think we have the staff that can make it happen. Make it happen and we, that was the other thing we talked about, having not talked to them. Well, we needed to make the decision first and then, then they were going to bring the fifth grade parents and teachers and some students together to brainstorm how to make this work. And I like that idea.
I, too, wrestle with this thought. This is not something I ever wanted to do on the school board, is close a building. I've been there, it hurts, but you go on. I want the Lincoln community to know that it is no reflection whatsoever on them, any part of them. But that's a sub-community of our larger community, which is the whole Facebook Community School District. And sitting in this position, that's where I have to make the decision. I really thought and hoped that we could go and just close one single section and go to five sections of K5. Looking at the numbers, that's not feasible. Also, doing the two motions, we do need to make the decision. We will go ahead with this as we have, but we can, even if we split it into two motions and we found out later that the fifth, five, eight didn't work, we can go back. At this time, it wouldn't matter if it was one or two motions, it looks to me like. I do have faith and I think that there, with our administrative team and teachers and they, they've got a big job ahead of them, but I think they can do it. They'll make it happen. They'll make it the best for the kids. And we've got to make sure we make the best fiscal decision we can to give them the tools to have a district.
Mr. Flonoy?
Well, it's a tough decision. I think we looked at it pretty thoroughly and the pros and the cons. A lot of them made, has been made about the negative environment at the middle school for the fifth graders. I understand some of those concerns. I see negative environment at the elementary buildings for third and fourth graders, maybe around fifth graders. I mean, that happens, too. And I think we spent too much time talking about that. Maybe we need to talk about the positives. There are positive experiences for both age groups, third graders at, at the elementary building in regard to fifth graders. And I think we can structure with Mr. Daley and Mrs. Slush, we'll have a nice positive environment for those fifth graders at the middle school because of restructure and they will make it that way, too. And I think if parents also have positive attitude, that'll also contribute substantially to the kind of experience the fifth graders will have if they go to the middle school. Another issue we made about isolating the fifth graders, and I think that maybe was a poor choice of words. I don't think we should isolate them fully. I think we should do the same kinds of things in a structured environment that we do at the elementary school with older and younger kids at the middle school. I think there's potential there for some positive things. And I think Mr. Daley and the, in the middle school administration, I think they can do that. I'm confident that we have the people that can make that happen. We already segregate grades all the time. We do it at the elementary levels. We segregate K2 from 3, 5. And we do that at the middle school when the sixth graders with them. We separate those people from each other to the secondary school already. Is that a good idea? I don't know. I guess it is, but it's what the community wants and that's what... I don't know, I guess it is, but it's what the community wants, and that's what we've done, so we'll probably do that to some extent with the fifth graders if they go to the middle school. So, it's something we haven't done before. I agree that if we were to close a single-section building and move those kids into the other elementary buildings, that the class sizes would just be unacceptable. We have a goal of seventeen, we never reached it, but we might to get, especially the early ages, in as small a class as possible, but looking at those numbers that we saw the other night, we're pushing twenty-eight students per classroom for fifth grade if we were moving into the existing buildings. And I think that's just too high, and it doesn't, I don't think it serves the interests of those students. We have space at the middle school that'd go unused if we didn't move them there. So, the concerns that have been raised. Do fourth graders do their job with fifth graders? Well, I think some of them can, and some of them probably can't, just like some fifth graders can't do the jobs that other fifth graders do, and some of them can, some of them can't. I think crossing guard is the biggest issue for that, in that area, and I think that we have probably some older fourth graders that maybe can, and as Mr. Carr told us, there's always a parent out there, or an adult out there with them when they're at a busy intersection like Madison and East Street. So, I'm not too worried about that. I mean, we've already taken some other steps to try and address the physical issues best we can, we administrators have generously offered to accept the salary freeze this year, we put in those salary freezes for our support staff, and, you know, this is going to be a $300,000-plus savings if we do it, and I don't see where else we're going to find $300,000. We have to be responsible not only to these fifth graders and to our elementary buildings, but to the entire district and the next grade as well. So, I think this is a good move at this time.
Just a couple of final thoughts, and I too thought it would be, would be great to do, to leave the K through five at the elementary level, but when I asked for numbers and looked at numbers, I just feel twenty-seven and twenty-eight kids in a class is not good for those kids, and that's what would happen if we have five sections of fourth and fifth grade. We can spread out the K through third and get smaller classes, but not with the, not with the other kids. I'm not sure there are enough classrooms available at the elementary centers if we were to go K through five and close down Lincoln. I will reiterate the feeling about Lincoln school closing. If we close down a building, regardless of which building it is, it's extremely difficult for the people who are in there. It's, it's breaking up a community, a livelihood. You can restructure, but you can't replace, and that's, that's something to think about. We do have to think about what is best for the kids, and I think that's our primary job here. I think back when we went to a nine-through-twelve high school and a six-through-eight middle school, and I think these same concerns were heard at that time, and I was probably one of those parents voicing those same concerns, but the kids came out okay. Robert, you were involved in that section.
Yeah, I was, but you're talking about some different, little different age group.
But, but the six-
We were more mature than a fifth grader.
Yeah, but the sixth graders moving into the middle school had some of the same concerns of parents at that point in time.
Still a whole year older. One year, that means a big difference.
You're right. Okay, any other comments, Ralph?
Yeah, I, you know, I wrote this down, because I want to say, and I tell you, I really, I really respect, and I'm glad for the emails and the phone calls and letters and so on, and all of us, I know, and we've all read the, read and talked. I've enjoyed it from the standpoint of getting to know you better and hearing what you had to say. I spent a lot of time with this gentleman over here, and we had a long cup of coffee, he talks a lot. We didn't solve the problem necessarily, but we sure understood each other better. So, I just want to, I want to say, with all due respect to all of you that I've listened to and spent time with and emailed back and forth, probably, well, I've listened to many of you in the community about both the closing and the move in the fifth grade. I've also read many, as, not just myself here, but I don't speak for them, many pages of information, some called a research, about the plus and the minus of the fifth graders in that five-eight setting. I've talked and listened to our superintendent administrative team about the decision, and I think we've all discussed it pretty hard, pretty thoroughly. For me, after doing all this, always, it comes down to the fact that I don't, I don't think it's the fifth graders, nor do I think it's the setting, the building, that determines the success or failure of this kind of educational change. Instead, it's the teachers, the parents, the administration, using proper care and concern, and the quick follow-up on any problems that might arise, that will determine the success or lack thereof for this endeavor. I look at you, fifth grade, the teachers, I'll tell you what, there's some good people there. I know most all of you personally, and I really have faith that you guys are going to help turn this around, should the vote go this way. And as you know right, as you listen to us right now, I'm not sure how it'll go, but however it goes is what we're going to do. So, I feel quite comfortable knowing that Mike and Kelly will stay around on top of this new challenge, and with the cooperation of the fifth grade teachers and parents, this endeavor not only can, but will succeed. So, I think, I'd like to see, depending on how the vote goes, if it goes, that we're going to make this move, I'd like to see fifth grade teachers step up to the plate and make this thing happen. If the vote passes, the issue with what to do with Lincoln School Building will determine at a later date. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board members? I am going to call for roll call.
Ready? Margaret Dwyer.
Yes.
Doug Flornoy.
Yes.
Jerry Kunkel.
Yes.
Ralph Messerly.
Yes.
Bob Waugh.
No.
Jennifer Anderson. And Gail Miller.
Yes.
Motion has carried. It does not mean that anything has been set in stone about how things operate at the middle school. As Ralph said, that's going to be something that Mike and Kelly and the fifth grade teachers and parents are going to be dealing with.
Can we just add one thing?
Sure.
It's my understanding that the fifth graders will be delivering, the curriculum will be delivered the same way it's delivering now when they move to the middle school. We should make that clear. That has been...
Yeah, a statement that Mr. Flornoy just made was that curriculum will be delivered as it has been. At this point in time, we're not anticipating that class, students will be changing classes as they do in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, correct, Mike?
Yes, I'm, I'm hearing.
Unless, unless, you know, and that would be a good way to start the year if we feel like changes need to be made. I think you people are capable of doing that. Next item on the agenda is, see, support and approve the grant application for construction of a rain garden at Fairfield Middle School. Do I have a motion to approve?
Should we approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to support the grant application for construction of a rain garden, is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. Ralph, I mean, I'd love to answer this question, but possibly how much water are we going to divert from the sewer system if we, if this is successful? An idea?
No, I don't. I know the size, the size of the rain garden is about ten foot by one hundred foot, so it'll be somewhat significant, but, no, I do not know.
The cacs on all that too, the water flows into it, but there also has to be an exit out of it.
Right.
In case of overflow and stuff, so.
Exactly.
It's hard to tell what's well retained.
Once it's filled, then the remainder of the water will go into the sanitary, or the storm sewer, I'm sorry. So, yes. What, it percolates. As far as the rain garden itself, they'll do a percolation test, there'll be tiling rock, almost like a leach field, to percolate out into the ground.
I think the idea is that it smooths out any large amounts of water, it sort of evens it out. So, if it rains, there's a whole bunch of water, and floods the sewer system with the garden, it rains, and it catches it, and it gradually feeds into the sewer system, so there's not an overflow.
Right.
Yeah, I know the theory of it, but I also know that the theory behind sand filters and leach fields for sewers today, that it sounds good, but it never, they've never showed me one that works very good, because clay doesn't leach.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of the grant application for construction of a rain garden? Please signify by aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Wow, what a difference.
Sorry about that.
Item D is, has a list of the early retirements to be considered at the April 12 board meeting, and that is informational only. There are a lot of veteran teachers on that one.
And a lot of very, very good teachers who have served the district very well, and will miss them, but, I know we have some good ones here.
Yes. Hopefully, we have good ones staying, which will, we'll pick up some of the slide there. Item E is the, to approve the new Trojan Stadium scoreboard as presented in the agreement with all Iowa score tables. Can I have a motion? Is there a second? Jennifer, second. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Mays is not here. I guess finance board will have, finance committee will have to discuss. Any discussions on this?
We kicked it around?
That's okay.
Go ahead.
There were some recommended changes coming out of finance, such as the ability to control, make sure that was in the contract, to be able to control the advertisement, what was being advertised.
Editorial.
And, yeah, editorial. Also, to look into more how the money was being distributed, that was further discussed. This is slightly less than what it was before, because the pricing has come, is a little bit less when all the details in this contract got worked out. Anyway, those matters have been addressed in this contract, that's why the contract is attached. And what it basically does is over, up to over five years for payoff, could get paid off sooner than that, once it does get paid off, then the revenue profits from it get split fifty-fifty between that company, which arranges for the advertisement, keeps it current, and the district. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Was the policy really going to address the, the way the money would be spent? I think it goes into the activities one?
Correct. That can be looked at by policy, that was another concern I think we had. We probably aren't quite ready to have a policy committee meeting probably for another, you know, three, four weeks.
Any other discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. We are into new business, first item is the resignation of Vicki Hunt as .5 full-time equivalent family and consumer science teacher at Fairfield High School. Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
This is just not one of the early retirement things, this is just a straight forward.
Yes, Vicki is teaching .5 halftime for us at the present time, has this year and last year. She's kind of one of those employees, she's, she enjoys her job very much. We probably will need services next year, but she kind of works from year to year on us. She's retired, taught here for a period of time, then went to Mount Pleasant, retired from Mount Pleasant. So, you know, we kind of have this, you know, thing that we collect her resignation at the same time we hire her, in order so that when we do reduction in force, if we would have to do any of that, we can have everything kind of clear at that point.
Didn't she fill in for...
She took over about a, really, last semester, really, it wasn't a full year, but she took over for Mrs. Mandy at second semester last year, then has taught halftime all this year.
That's what I was thinking for situation.
Correct. She, I think, does have limitations because of retirement, of how much she can teach, and she's not like some here, you know, some of our own employees can come back and they work for $28,000 straight a year, and they're called former employees under the contract. We don't have to pay them benefits, because they, that's what they got the early retirement incentive for. Vicki Hunt is not a former employee, okay? She had worked for us before, but she's not a former employee in the standard of the master contract phrasing.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of accepting the resignation of Vicki Hunt? Say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. The next hire is the Washington Elementary Food Service Position. The recommendation is to approve the hiring of Barbara Thornton to fill the 4.5-hour-per-day food service position, effective tomorrow, March 9. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. We have a request to hire or to approve Heidi Grunwell as a high school girls tennis coach, step one, level four.
Before we go ahead, it probably would be better to do it, just like you said, to begin with President Miller, hire is more than approved, because this is a position.
Approve the hire of Heidi Grunwell as a high school girls tennis coach.
I still move. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried there. Mr. Mays is asking for a voluntary transfer of Felice Stoll-Gussamain to boys soccer and Roland Hacker to girls soccer.
Can we approve?
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? I understand they're just flipping positions? One was, yeah, okay. Any other discussion questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. We have a request for family medical leaves, we have two employees, we'll take employee A first. Mr. Akapul is passing the information around that you need.
Sorry, I should have got a call.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve A.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded.